All right, so welcome to the sixth hearing of the committee's inquiry into PFAS contamination in waterways and drinking water supplies throughout New South Wales. I acknowledge the Gadigal people of the Eora Nation, the traditional custodians on the lands on which we are meeting today. I pay my respects to elders past and present and celebrate the diversity of Aboriginal peoples and their ongoing cultures and connections to the lands and waters of New South Wales. I also acknowledge and pay my respects to any Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islander people joining us today. My name is Kate Fairman and I am Chair of the Committee. I ask everyone in the room to please turn their mobile phones to silent. As all witnesses today are appearing from overseas, parliamentary privilege does not apply to the evidence they give. I urge witnesses to be careful about the comments they make during their evidence and to avoid making adverse reflections about others. The Legislative Council has adopted rules to provide procedural fairness for inquiry participants. I encourage committee members and witnesses to be mindful of these procedures. And just before we begin swearing the witnesses in, there's a couple of, there's three members of the committee, including myself, here in the New South Wales Parliament Room. And we have three other committee members appearing online. So, welcome to you and thank you so much for making the time to give evidence. So could each of you please state your name and position, title, and swear either an oath or affirmation, which I understand you have those words in front of you. We'll start with you, Dr. Ong, and then you, Dr. Lee.
Excellent. So hello, everyone. My name is Max Ong. I'm an Assistant Professor at the University of Southern California. I solemnly, sincerely, and truly declare and affirm that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
Thank you so much. Dr. Lee?
Hi, my name is Shiven Lee. I'm a postdoctoral scholar at the University of Southern California. I solemnly, sincerely, and truly declare and affirm that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
Thank you both so much. Now, you do have the ability to provide a short note opening statement to the committee. Is, do you have that?
Yes, I will be giving the opening statement.
Thanks, Dr. Lee.
Thank you again for the opportunity to speak at today's hearing on PFAS contamination in waterways and drinking water supplies. I'm a postdoctoral researcher at the Kex School of Medicine at the University of Southern California, speaking today as an individual with expertise in environmental epidemiology. Several well-studied PFAS have been established to adversely harm human health by leading authoritative bodies, including the US National Academies of Sciences Engineering and Medicine, or NASM, and the US Environmental Protection Agency, or EPA. Based on the NASM report, PFAS are likely to cause kidney and testicular cancer and to have adverse hepatic immunological, cardiovascular, and developmental effects. Over the past two years, I've published multiple studies on health effects associated with PFAS exposure to maybe particularly relevant to this committee. In one epidemiological study in Southern California, we found that individuals living in areas where multiple PFAS were detected in drinking water supplies had blood PFAS concentrations higher than residents in areas with PFAS in drinking water. This strongly suggests that PFAS levels in blood could be lowered by limiting PFAS in drinking water. In the national analysis of US drinking water PFAS levels, we observed that detection or exceedance of proposed permissible PFAS concentrations for multiple PFAS was associated with higher incidence rates of cancers affecting the digestive, oral, pharyngeal, respiratory, and endocrine system, for example, thyroid cancer. Our studies suggest that drinking water is a likely reason for higher PFAS concentrations in human and that detection of PFAS in drinking water supplies may increase the risk of cancer. Although the design of our study of cancers have some limitations, it adds to the, it adds to an emerging body of scientific evidence that PFAS causes cancer and that reducing PFAS water concentrations could potentially reduce incidence of cancer. We're happy to answer questions relevant to our studies. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you so much, both of you. Now firstly, the latest research paper that you've both been a part of, as well as quite a few other researchers, I understand from the University of Southern California, has been published in the journal Nature just a few months ago. Is that correct?
In the Journal of Environmental Exposure Sciences under the?
Yes, Under Nature, yes. And that's a peer, your study was peer reviewed?
Yes, it's, it's peer reviewed.
Yes, and it states here in the abstract that it's the first ecological study that examined PFAS exposure in drinking water and various cancer risks. I wonder if you could explain, because I have read the paper. It's very technical, nobody on this inquiry, we're not chemists or, as I understand, I don't think any of us have studied chemistry.
Where have you seen the paper?
We haven't, I think it was circulated to the members. But if you could just explain as, as simply as you can, what you did in terms of the PFAS levels in drinking water in parts of the United States? And how, 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 how much of that? Plus the, where you got the cancer risks from, it was a database, I understand. But what you did to apply that, that's particularly important, if someone, if you could just explain that.
Yeah, so what we did, we used publicly available data. One is from the National Cancer Institute, it's called SEER database. And then we obtained the county level cancer incidence rate for each of the county with available data. And then we also use US EPA's data, that they did a national level PFAS testing in public drinking water systems. So, so that's, that are systems serving, for example, municipal waters, but not the, the private wells, so they don't include private wells. So we use that data, so they, they have done PFAS testing from 2013 to 2015 in the first wave and then did another wave of testing in 2023 to present day. So the testing is still ongoing and they tested, in the first round, they tested for the six PFAS I listed in the paper and then in the recent wave, they tested more PFAS, I think about 20, 20 something PFAS. And what I did, I merged the two data set and I'm trying to understand whether in areas where they have higher PFAS detections, will the PFAS cancer, will the cancer incidence rate higher than those without PFAS detections? And it's at the county level, that's why it's called ecological, because we didn't use individual level data. We only use county level data. But we tried to control for various neighbourhood level information, as well as individual level informations like age and sex.
Yes, it was a, it was a, how long did the research take?
Roughly a year, I think, from the beginning to the end.
Yeah, now it does say in terms of the summary, and the, the, the objective was to, to essentially look at whether there was an association between PFAS contamination in drinking water and incidence of cancer. Is that correct to summarise very?
Yes.
And so, did you find, so there's a difference, isn't there, between there's an association and then there's, for example, a causative relationship? Did you, where, where did you get to with that? Because I think we, with our health departments here, we're kind of, they've stated that to date, our causative relationship between the health effects and PFAS exposure has not been clearly established. Would that be a correct statement from your current research? Would you, would you agree with that?
So my study is only one of the many studies that studied PFAS and cancer. My unique part of the study is that we try to screen all the cancer associations with all the PFAS data available. So that, the point is to give directions of other cancers that haven't been linked to PFAS yet. So that's my initial intention of developing this study. But there has been, like I stated in my opening statement, for example, the NASM, the National Academy of Science Medicine Engineering. What they did, they did a systematic review of existing literatures on PFAS and various cancer and they tried to evaluate each of the study and then trying to identify high-quality studies that can provide evidence, leading to a point of causation. What they call it in the report is likely to cause cancer. So that's their statement. But my study in particular, because it's an ecological study, it is more for the screening purposes for future research, rather than establish a strong causation. Because, for example, like if you, you can't really do random controlled clinical trials, which is the highest evidence that you can do to establish causations. That's kind of impossible for toxic chemicals to do random, randomized trials. So most, most current practice, most scientific practice is to do systematic reviews and evaluate evidence, leading to some conclusions.
Yes, now, with this research states that you found that PFAS in drinking water was associated with cancers in the organ system, including the oral cavity pharynx, lung, digestive system, brain, urinary system, soft tissue, and thyroid. So your research, because there's, there's very interesting maps in your study that show in some ways the correlation between higher levels of PFAS in drinking water and these incidents of cancer. Could you expand on that a bit for the committee?
You, you mean explaining the, the maps or?
The, yes, I spoke, the, why you have, again, because it's a very technical paper, but what has led you to, in the, the summary at the front page, the impact statement to say that you found that PFAS in drinking water was associated with those cancers that I mentioned?
Yeah, yeah, so what we did, we tried to use statistical models to model the associations between the exposure, in this case PFAS, and cancer. And the statistical model we use, we select other variables that may also influence the cancer incidence rates. When we tried to take, when we put them in the models, all the other factors were, what we call it, we are controlling for all the other variables that may potentially confound, may potentially bias the associations. Because we, if we simply looking at the correlations, there's a lot of factors that might, might explain the correlations. So what we did is a step forward to try to control for additional factors that may confound the associations. Although it's not perfect, but we tried our best with our modelling approach. And in, in the statistical models, we, we use 95% confidence intervals to indicate significance of associations. So, so if you see me listing, for example, an effect estimate, if it's above the, if, if it's above one and if doesn't, if the 95% confidence interval doesn't include one, then we call it a significant association based on this statistical threshold. So that's how I arrived to, I'm not sure if I'm explaining to the question that, that you, you want me to answer, but that's how we arrived to the, to the conclusion.
Yeah, okay, and I'm sure members will continue to, to probe and ask questions if, in terms of getting a better understanding on this. So I'm going to go to Mr. Barrett, who's got his hand up online, and then Mr. Donnelly in the room here.
Thank you. I haven't tested this yet. I presume I'm being heard?
Yeah, all good, loud and clear.
Yeah, great. I just wondered if someone could give me some sort of insight as, you know, well-renowned academics. How advanced is our research here in Australia?
If anyone, are you aware, Dr. Lee or Dr. Ong, what the?
I will infest that we are not abreast to all of the latest research that have been conducted specifically in local areas in Australia. But if you wanted to share specific examples with us, we'd be happy to take the time to independently review and reflect and provide additional feedback.
I guess where I'm sort of headed is down two paths and we'll tackle one at a time. How can we as policymakers help develop that research sector in this area? And the other aspect that might be along the same lines is how can we be more collaborative internationally? Sharing that research and, you know, bouncing off each other's research.
Great, yeah, that's a wonderful, great question. I would say that one area that would be particularly helpful is to engage in exposure assessment of PFAS in drinking water systems. And something that, you know, we've been doing in the US is we have a national biomonitoring study called the National Health and Nutrition Examination Survey, where we've been randomly sampling swaths of the US to try to understand exposure levels in the general population. And then individual states have also been doing this at like a state level. But I think that could certainly help in terms of trying to understand the context of the exposure levels to PFAS in your specific context. And being able to sort of compare and contrast with other biomonitoring studies across the world, including the US. And we also have another study where we linked those biomonitored PFAS to self-reported cancer diagnoses as well. And I'm happy to share that paper as well, if it's helpful.
And as far as going a little bit deeper into that international collaboration, like, it seems like we could, it seems the US is more advanced in, in the research as well as our experiences with PFAS. How, how, how should we be sharing that better?
Sharing like data, data access or?
Knowledge, I guess.
Yeah, I mean, I think there's a lot of forums in which we can, you know, share research. I would say academic conferences, town halls, community workshops. I think all of those are really great forums to talk about what we know about the science. Something we had recently is we had a national PFAS conference here in the US. It was in last June. So a lot of different stakeholders got together in Michigan, which is a major site of PFAS contamination. And so it included researchers like Dr. Lee and I, and as well as community members who've been affected by contamination, as well as regulators, state agencies, senators. So it was a really great sort of forum and I, I think that could also be a really great model to think about, especially with your local context.
Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. We'll go to Mr. Donnelly now.
Thank you, Chair. And thank you, gentlemen both, for making yourself available today. It's greatly appreciated. I want to provide just a bit of an opening context if I could, and then provide just a few questions. The inquiry that we're undertaking here is looking at the whole issue of PFAS contamination in, in water. And it's been said by various witnesses that essentially PFAS is essentially, sort of, to use the words, found everywhere. It's, it's manifested in, in all sorts of places, in, in, including water. And that that's just something that we have got ourselves into as a position, that, that we find ourselves where it would be surprising to in fact not find it in various places, including drinking water. Which brings then the question, well, if it's in the water, and let's make this assumption, if I could, and it's a bold assumption, but I think it's accurate, that if, if, if we had the complete perfect situation, it would be that it not be in, in our drinking water. In other words, the ultimate position to be in, that I think would be arguably the most satisfactory, that PFAS chemicals and, and, and the chemicals within the PFAS family, it would be desirable to have none of that in our drinking water. And of course, that would in fact apply to a number of other impurities in our drinking water. So I, I just set that up as, as caveat, that if, if those statements are, are correct or, 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 you know, well, very close to being correct. Do you have a, a view about how governments or legislatures and regulators deal with the reality of trying to set limits as far as we practically can with the knowledge, the scientific knowledge we have to deal with this chemical in our drinking water, knowing full well that we just can't make it disappear overnight? So I, I guess I'm, I'm moving from a strict scientific examination and can I commend you on your research, because we do need to know about its, its presence in not just drinking water, but in the environment more generally. But when it comes to coming to terms with how we progress to set regulations, and these regulations may in fact lead to tighter limits and lower limits on PFAS. As regulators, or through, 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 through the legislature and regulators, how do we go about setting a limit that we can then work on reducing over time in, in a practical way? I might just pause there. It's, it's a challenging question, I know it's been posed to other witnesses, but this is taking, I guess, overall perspective from yourself as, as scientists looking at this issue.
I?
Sorry, go ahead, Shirley.
Yeah, I, I guess, I, one, one suggestion would be to try to do a health economics studies on the issue, trying to estimate the cost of reducing certain, reducing PFAS and trying to weigh that against the potential healthcare expenditures that it may incur and see what's the most cost-effective ways of reducing that. So that's, that's a new area of research that people are doing, including myself, trying to do cost-effective analysis of regulating chemicals, can taking into consideration of all the factors.
If I could just, sorry, Dr. D, interrupt you, just to press you. I'm talking about the, the very practical requirement of a legislature or a regulatory body to either in the first instance, legislatively create and then enforce a specific limit that we, we can generally accept is where we ought be with our overall ambition of trying to move contamination by PFAS over time. How do we identify that limit that we can work on and work with in a practical way?
I think that's what I'm trying to say is that you do need to work with public health officials to do the research. And I do think economics is a big part of the problem that you need to consider. Was, because for some of the water, waterways and water companies, it might not be affordable. Then think about other economic solutions that might support those regulations will be imported. So it, it is a combination of economics, time, and then the limit. So, so it's, it's impossible if you set a limit for next year and then nobody has the resources to achieve it, then it's going to be, but then you do need to have a solid research before you set the limit. I think that's really important, in, in my opinion.
Thank you, that's very helpful. Doctor, do you have a, a view? Do you, are you concurrent with that position or do you have a, like to elucidate further on that answer?
You mean, Dr. Ong?
I mean, the, the only thing I would really add is, I think it's really critical to, you know, also engage with public stakeholders, you know, getting insight from the facts that have, that local communities who have been impacted by the problem, getting their input and doing that community engagement, I think is also, you know, I, I'm not sure exactly how the local context of, of your decision-making, your rule-making
Of course.
is, but having that engagement with local stakeholders, I think, will, is, is so critical will help inform your process.
Okay, I've got more questions, but I might need to put them on notice. Thank you.
Okay, we'll, we'll go to Mrs. McDonald now, online for questions.
Thank you, and thank you both for attending today. My first question is to Dr. Dr. Lee. And I wanted to know, like, based on, say, your modelling, what or which populations do you think are most at risk from, say, low-dose, long-term PFAS exposure?
My research doesn't answer what's the population at risk. We're just trying to look at the exposed population versus unexposed. But based on the NASM guidelines, they specifically point out those who have metabolic disorders, that are higher, at a higher risk of PFAS. And so they have clinical guidelines on, on those who have higher PFAS and other metabolic syndromes.
Okay, and this might add to my colleague, the Honourable Mr. Barrett's question with regard to, so do you believe Australia's current PFAS safety thresholds in drinking water reflect the best available science?
Can I just check if you're aware of what they, are you aware of what they are? Otherwise, I can quickly let you know.
Well, we can do it as a question on notice.
Yeah.
Yeah, we might do that and then, yeah, give you that information so that then you can then answer that question. And then, what do you think the implications of, say, PFAS accumulation in the body over time, particularly for communities with ongoing low-level exposure?
Okay, can you repeat the question?
What do you, what are the implications of PFAS accumulation in the body over time? Say particularly for, you know, communities where there's ongoing low-level exposure?
I, I, I think the, the clinical implications is, is the part that, that I can really comment on. But that, all I can say is that the, as long as you don't cut off the exposure sources, the PFAS chemicals are gonna keep accumulating and then potentially, potentially arising to some health effects. But then the probabilities of one individual can get a disease or not, that's kind of harder to determine.
Thank you. And then, is it Dr. Ong? Is that how you say?
Yes.
Yeah, sorry. In, in your view, how effective are biomonitoring programs in tracking PFAS exposure? And then in doing that, informing public policy?
I mean, in terms of biomonitoring in the general population, it really helps for a lot of our research studies to benchmark sort of where our unique local For a lot of our research studies to benchmark sort of where our unique local populations. Fall in this wide distribution of the population, right? So it can help inform, for example, let's say we're doing a local study. Of a community that lives near a PFAS polluting industry where there's high contamination. By having that national distribution of of PFAS concentrations at the national level. We can be able to communicate that to policymakers, to community members, you know, and be able to explain that, hey, you know. This local community is falling way above the average of the national distribution. And that can help really put important context so that decision makers can use that information. To determine, you know, if if there, what types of resources they need to invest into that local community.
And then further on that, how important is, say, early intervention and precautionary regulation? In protecting communities from a long term PFAS impacts?
I I would say it depends on the health outcome. Some diseases, you know, one particularly that we study. Is metabolic associated liver disease. It is a chronic condition that can increase in severity over time and stay relatively. Without major symptoms as the disease progresses. So if PFAS are impacting the those that condition. And having toxic effects on the liver, knowing that earlier on, knowing that somebody has higher exposures early on. Is helpful because it may serve as a preventive tool from later life disease. So that's just one, you know, sort of anecdote I would I would mention.
Thank you. I just have two more questions. What lessons can New South Wales take from US approaches to community engagement? And PFAS health surveillance? Maybe take on notice?
Yeah, yeah, I'll have to think about that a little bit more. Just also, I I don't quite know yet what you've been already doing, so.
Yeah.
It would be nice to, yeah, to know that a little bit better.
Okay.
Thank you.
Well, then maybe the second one, do you have any recommendations for integrating PFAS biomonitoring? Into our public health policy and particularly for us in like rural and regional.
Um, you know, I think like one thing for us that we've been, we've learned. We've been taking a lot of lessons from that National Academies report because of. The the use of all of that data that they integrated in the report, they were able to provide these. Parameters of concentrations to inform clinical care and clinical guidelines. It's still early on, a lot of that hasn't been fully translated to clinicians and hospitals and public healthcare systems. But we've, as researchers, really been able to anchor onto that as we communicate. Our biomonitoring studies to our local residents. When we do community engagement, we always, you know, show that. That NASM report and how their PFAS levels are contextualized by those guidelines. So, you know, I would say that's a good first step is to explore that report. And think about how that can be used when you're doing biomonitoring and report back of data to to community residents.
Thank you. Uh thank you and thank you, Chair.
Thanks. Thank you. I'll go to questions from Mr. Murphy now.
Thank you, Chair. And look, I just really wanted to ask. In relation to your study, one of the things that we've heard in evidence before this committee is there are. Literally tens of thousands of different types of PFAS, PFAS, PFOS, PFOA and so on. In what could be described as the class of PFAS chemicals. Your study, as I understand it, focused on, I think, the main six, is that right? And you were looking at that cancer risk in relation to those. What I wanted to know was whether there's, in a sense, different risks for different types of PFAS. Are some more risky than others to some cause, you know, have a higher link to rates of cancer? Than others? And is there an accumulation risk where if you've got two different types of PFAS together? The risk is increased. You may not know the the answer to that, but I I wanted to see if you had a view. And also whether there are things we should do if we don't know the answer to that now. Should we be banning or limiting? Types of PFAS, long chain, for example, or other types of PFAS before we know the answers to those questions?
Yeah, so in my study and as well as in many other PFAS cancer studies. It does show that different PFAS have different toxicities and to different tissues. It it depends on their chemical structures, so they might accumulate in one organ tissues more than the other ones. So so there is differences, there there is. Some some PFAS might consider less toxic, but but in general, they're all toxic, but they're relative.
The reason why there are different cancers that you point the link to between men and women? Is that because of the particular organs that it accumulates in or is it the type of PFAS or?
That is more because there is often a sex specific effects of PFAS. I I do consider that that's slightly more because of the sex differences rather than. It's possible I haven't done too much into that, but like a research into that, but but definitely there are sex differences. For example, like some of the PFAS may act as a. Similar to like hormones, so they will inter interact with certain hormone receptors more than the other. And there's more maybe one type of hormone receptor is more common in one sex than the other one. So that may, then you will see a differences in the cancer risk. And and different PFAS do have different metabolic rates in body. So your your body metabolize different PFAS differently. So for some of the PFAS, it may stay in your body shorter than the other ones. So that might also cause the differences in bioaccumulations. And also depending on the chemical structure, some of the PFAS, you will never be able to detect in 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 certain. Biological fluid fluid like urine or blood, but they do get used and maybe they degrade into something else in the body. So so it's not always one hundred percent correlating with the the exact PFAS chemicals they use in the products. Or in the in the in the water contamination versus the metabolized version of the PFAS in our body. So it's not one hundred percent matching because of the metabolism.
Yeah, and and given that that's the case. What we've heard from our health authorities, for example, is that there just isn't evidence confirming. Particular links to cancers and whether there's a causational link there. You know, should we be taking a more cautious approach in terms of PFAS until the link's established? Or do you think we can manage this by setting lower amounts in water levels and. Reducing exposure elsewhere? Do you have a view about that?
My my recommendation would be to look at what other legislative authorities have established. For example, not legislative, but like other authoritative bodies, like the International. Society of Cancer, so who determine the cancer risk, IARC. They have determined PFOA and PFOS as Group One and Group Two A carcinogens. And they have published papers on on those as well. And for example, the NASM called them likely to cause cancer. So it's really up to your interpretation what this likely means. Whether it's harmful or not, whether it's causation or not.
Yeah, and and do you think that extends to the whole class of PFAS chemicals? Because, you know, as I say, what we hear is that a lot of this, the risks aren't known because we simply haven't. Conducted studies into those risks in relation to many of the chemicals within the class.
So so in our research, something we call it is the regrettable substitution. So sometimes we replace a chemical with another chemical that that we we think is. Is supposedly less toxic, but without large scale exposure and population level studies, we can never know. But then at that time, it's kind of too late, so. Yeah, so it's up to you to decide what kind of approach that you want to take. And also, it's also interesting that I do see some some of the PFAS that they change the chemical structure slightly. And they call it a different name and they use that as a replacement, but they are equally toxic. So that's also happening at the same time. So so it is a back chemical structure, a different chemical. But then they only change maybe one carbon bond on there and call it a different chemical. But then they, or some someone would say this is no study on it. It's it's true that there is no study on that new chemical.
Thank you. I might just jump in with a few more questions. The, I just wanted to, just to be clear, for the committee, when you mentioned NASM. You're talking about the National Academies of Sciences, Engineering and Medicine. So they have released a guidance on PFAS exposure testing and clinical follow up. Yep, so the witnesses are nodding for the purposes of answer. That the guide, the report recommends, I understand, that the Centers for Disease Control. And Prevention in the US update its clinical guidance to advise clinicians to offer PFAS blood testing. To patients who are likely to have a history of elevated exposure. So that's the, that's what NASM has recommended. Is that correct? Is that happening in the US? Or is that just what the National Academies of Sciences, Engineering and Medicine is recommending?
Uh I think at the current stage, it's a recommendation, but the implementation of that is certainly still. A consideration, I would say.
And so, but, yep, sorry, Dr. Lee.
In in some clinical setting, the medical doctors can order a test using a code. So that exists for for PFAS testing, so that that part exists. The the widespread knowledge of the the existence of that doctors can order a PFAS testing is not quite there yet.
Okay, all right. And so from from your, the the experience that you've had, the knowledge that you've gained. As a result of looking at the levels of PFAS pollution combined with the cancer incidences. I just wanted to give you an example of a community here in New South Wales. That's may have been or has been exposed to PFAS chemicals or PFOS particularly in their drinking water. So it's called the Blue Mountains is is this community. And a new report has come out recently, which has acknowledged that this community or some of them have been drinking PFOS in their. In their drinking water potentially for thirty two years, so from an incident back in nineteen ninety two. So here in Australia, we've got draft drinking water guidelines, which suggests that the new PFOS levels are four. Nanograms per liter, which is the same as the US, so four parts per trillion. But we know for sure that they have been drinking. One part sixteen parts per trillion, so that's four times higher than the safe level, potentially back to. Nineteen ninety two. And then there's another reservoir, which has recently come out and it was at twenty eight point seven. Nanograms per liter or parts per trillion. So. Would you consider, based on the work that you've done, that this community should have their health monitored and perhaps their bloods tested?
I think, based on those contamination levels, you'd have to also think about, you know, exposure routes. Is this assessing if this is indeed the drinking water that they consume?
Yes, yes. So let's just say, yes, because many of the residents have been drinking that tap water for for many years.
So I think, I mean, based off of information from the National Academies report, it's would be. Helpful to do biomonitoring to see if there is elevated levels. And use the best available science that we have from that to help inform clinical interventions or or. Clinical follow up.
Yeah, so some of the, some of the residents in the Blue Mountains are getting their own bloods tested. Because there hasn't been anything that has been put in place by the state or federal governments, by the state government. Five hundred dollars a pop, Australian, which is more than US, five hundred dollars a pop. And they have, for example, one woman has twenty nanograms. Over twenty nanograms per liter, for example, of different PFAS chemicals in her blood, quite high levels are coming through. What benefits do you see for the government if they were to undertake? Or offer voluntary blood tests for this community? Do you see benefits in terms of the government doing this?
I would certainly think that knowing PFAS levels can help inform ways to reduce exposure. At the community level. And I think that, you know, could certainly be a potential benefit. I'm not sure in terms of, I guess, your question in terms of like broader impacts, I I guess. Who might need a little bit more context on that?
Yeah, so I I suppose if your research is drawing links and reasonably strong links. Between higher levels of PFAS chemicals in drinking water and incidence of cancer. For example, your conclusion reads that. This cancer wide ecological study presents evidence linking PFAS exposure through drinking water to increased cancer risks. That's what you've concluded. Plus, you then say, the significant associations identified between PFAS in drinking water and various cancers. Including those of the endocrine, digestive, oral cavity, pharynx, skin and respiratory systems. Underscore the urgent need for more comprehensive research. So there there has been a significant association. So would it therefore follow that governments? That are in charge of communities that have had a history of elevated exposure of PFAS in drinking water? That they really should be undertaking health studies and other, sorry, blood tests and other health studies of those impacted communities firstly. That's surely the 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 basic, that's the beginning, isn't it?
Yeah, I I think understanding the the exposure levels, like what Dr. Ong said is is very important. Without knowing how much PFAS in their blood is kind of impossible to do any other research.
Yeah, and then the, your research would he help health authorities understand. Potentially early monitoring. So I spoke to somebody, I did visit the US earlier in the year, Michigan and Minnesota. To talk to communities impacted by PFAS in drinking water. And an example in Michigan is a woman who, after drinking elevated levels of PFAS. In there, in her private drinking well for some time. Then because of that, because of that discovery. Got an early test for uh thyroid uh cancer and it was detected early. Isn't that one of the the, one of the the main reasons really, is to try and get health. Effects of PFAS, drinking or consuming or PFAS exposure, to try and ensure that those health impacts are caught. Early, so that if somebody does have high levels, you can then test them for different things?
Yes, certainly, that um, that's a great point to make and um. At, uh, you know, it's unfortunate to catch thyroid cancer, um, although early is uh better than later. Um, you know, according to the NASM guidelines, there's also other biomarkers indicative of liver damage. Of um high cholesterol, those can even be earlier indicators of chronic disease. Um, so I totally um agree that there's, you know, the spectrum of disease prevention. And um having biomonitoring studies can help inform early detection, early prediction. Uh, so that we could, um, you know, implement a healthcare plan that can, you know, help the progress. Uh, help prevent the progression of the disease.
Thank you, um, I did wanna just get your thoughts about um a broader uh suite of. Chemicals that we should be testing for in our drinking water, and I know that you were potentially taking it on notice, but we do have a few minutes left. So, um, we currently, so Australia currently has uh six. Five, uh, five chemicals, PFAS chemicals. Um, so it's um PFOA, PFOA, PFOS, PFH, SX. Then we have, we don't currently test for PFBS um or Gen X chemicals. So actually, at the moment, there's PFOA, PFOS and PFHS, SX. I know in your re, oh, sorry, and then our draft guidelines, so um these are up for, have been closed for public consultation. Hopefully will come online this year, our draft guidelines are are stricter. Um, and include PFBS and um nothing for Gen X chemicals. So your research shows a very long, uh, very strong, sorry, link between PFBS. And oral cancers, particularly in women. Your research says that the largest effect was observed between, yeah, the detection of PFBS in cancers in the oral cavity and pharynx. Um, do you think that we should be doing uh more, uh, we should be more concerned about PFBS therefore in our drinking water?
Well, I I think for PFAS testing wise, um, you, uh, there's the EPA method. That test for about forty or something, or seventy PFAS. So if resources are available, uh, you should use the most uh current method.
Hmm.
Uh, available to do PFAS testing, uh, because the issues we had in the past. Uh, so the prior data set that they released that only has six PFAS. It it just presents a challenge of finding associations uh with limited data. And uh very high detection limits, so so if the technology allows and resource, resources allowed. Um, I would, I I would think using the most uh current technology would be better than using the. The outdated ones.
Yes, and so for example, yeah.
And and for the associations, um, I think it's interesting to see that in the uh, the most current. Uh, EPA testing, uh, that PFBS is very prevalent among water systems. Uh, the reason why it's prevalent is unknown, uh, to me at least. Uh, but but it's interesting that this is, this is a very prevalent uh low exposure PFAS. That we find in in different water systems.
So that's basically, once you start testing for it, so you're saying the U S EPA, this is federally, has um. Are they requiring water utilities across the state to test for seventy different PFAS chemicals? Is that? Correct?
It's, it's just their, the method they're using.
Okay.
So, 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 uh, in terms of regulating or not, that's a different.
Hmm.
Topic, but t- testing why their their EPA regu- uh, reg- uh EPA methods that that. Just does the targeted testing of those seventyish PFAS.
Yes, okay, good for, just another example of one, um, you, your paper has the PFNA. Um, that's associated with cancers in the endocrine system, mainly thyroid cancers again. That's just not on our radar at all, so if we're, uh, we're at the, quite an early stage. I think of requiring uh our water utilities to actually test, let alone, you know, filter. Um, but do you agree that considering where we are in the stage of, um, where we are in this kind of journey? That it would be better to test for more to begin with, as opposed to something which I think is is quite outdated. In terms of the chemicals that are um currently listed on our draft drinking water guidelines? I mean, they're important, but um we should potentially look at what more we could do.
I I really think it depends on the resources available, uh, if, again, the PFOA, PFOS. Are still the most highly, one of the highly prevalent PFAS. And if you want to start with somewhere with limited resources, um, those are the the ones that you should target. But then if more resources available, uh, and with the most current technology. Um, available, then then you should, uh, at at least you you should, uh. You learn the lessons from what other people have done and and trying to like see if there's resources to catch up with everyone else.
To catch up, yes, Australia needs to catch up with every, everybody else, um, PFOA. Um, so that's been declared carcinogenic, obviously at the international, by the International Agency for Research on Cancer. The U S EPA has a drinking water guideline of four, uh, nanograms per litre, is that correct?
Yes.
Yeah, so, um, what is your opinion of uh Australia's? So we currently, our current guidelines are five hundred and sixty nanograms per litre for PFOA. Uh, the draft, firstly, what's your impression, what's your um view on five hundred and sixty nanograms per litre? Which is the current for PFOA, based on your study into cancer?
Um, well, so far, I don't think any water system, maybe some of them, which like if I look at the. In my study, the average is about, um, I think below ten, I think. Uh, I can can remember the exact details of the numbers, uh, but, yeah, I.
So you haven't found high levels of, there's PFAR in drinking water anyway?
Uh, I don't recall, well, only a couple, not like a huge amount.
Okay, and so our, our revised drinking water guideline for PFOA is two hundred nanograms per litre. So do you see a reason why, for example, that two hundred wouldn't be lower uh to four? If you, if you're unsure of why it would be drinking in drinking water in the first place?
Well, again, it's just like, it's very rare to find a water system that has that much higher levels.
Hmm.
I, yeah, I don't think it's practical to set a limit that no water system can reach that high. Uh, ever.
Okay, thank you, um, any last uh questions? I um, uh, probably have uh one more question. So, um, based on, based on your, um, your extensive research. Would you, um, I just wanted to uh read out, um, so. Statements such as, um, that it is unlikely or very unlikely. Uh, that, uh, we are able to show any health outcomes that could be directly, directly attributed. To particular um PFAS or PFAS amounts. So your research is showing, is that, is that. There are health outcomes and significant health outcomes as a result of higher levels of PFAS in drinking water. If people have been drinking that water.
Well, I think this study, since it's ecological, we can't assume that they're drinking that water, right? But it's an association, right, between living in the, the, the cancer incidence. Relative to the drinking water contamination. So I I think that's where you'd have to interpret the findings at that sort of, at at those boundaries.
Thank you, um, that, we're actually uh out of time. Um, I wanted to uh thank you both so much for agreeing to uh appear before this inquiry at um relatively short notice. Uh, your uh research and your evidence has been extremely valuable. The committee will be in touch with you if you've agreed to take anything on notice or if members have any further uh additional questions. Uh, for you, so um I wanna thank you once again uh so much for tuning in from the other side of the world. Uh, for uh this inquiry, thank you, so now we'll now call out next witnesses, thank you both so much.
All right, thanks, take care.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, I will uh say hello to Senator Judy Seiburger and Ms. Ivana Stark. Thank you both so much for joining us here today. Um, now, before we um formally begin, we will formally begin by getting you both sworn in. So we'll start with you, Senator Seiburger, if you could please, if you've got the either, the oath or affirmation, if you could state. Uh, that as well as your name and position title, please.
Madam Chair, I'm Senator Judy Seiburger, uh, from Sen- uh Senate District Forty One in the state of Minnesota. I solemnly, sincerely and truly declare and affirm that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth.
Thank you so much, uh, Ms. Stark.
Hello, Ivana Stark, I'm the State Director of Clean Water Action Minnesota. And I solemnly, sincerely and truly declare and affirm that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth.
Thank you, thank you so much, um, Senator Seiburger, firstly, thank you so much for making yourself available. Uh, uh, on, during this, what I understand is a very busy day for you, um, but do you have a short opening statement for the committee?
I do, thank you, Chair.
Thank you.
For years, my constituents and I have been ingesting water contaminated with PFAS. My district is one of the most heavily contaminated by PFAS in the state of Minnesota. Due to years of illegal and irresponsible chemical disposal and dumping by three M. For thousands of Minnesotans in my region, including me, it's a problem that we must deal with every time we turn on our faucets. Wash our hands, brush our teeth, do our laundry, cook dinner, I could go on, and it's a problem that we'll be dealing with for decades to come. I am proud to say that in twenty twenty three, I authored a bill which passed the Minnesota Legislature and was signed into law. And which provides the most comprehensive bans on PFAS in the United States. With this bill, our state has banned the use of PFAS in everyday products such as cookware, cosmetics, cleaning products. Carpets and rugs, juvenile products, menstrual products and more. By twenty thirty two, we will have banned the use of all non-essential PFAS in our state. These common sense prohibitions will stop the introduction of these chemicals into our environment. And I'm encouraged to see other nations move in the same direction. Minnesota is noteworthy for many things, beautiful lakes, forests, streams and farmland, vibrant cities. World-class educational institutions and some of the nicest people you'll ever meet. But we're also noteworthy as the place where PFAS began. That's why I'm proud that we are now leading the fight to eliminate PFAS from our environment. And to help every state in our nation and country around the globe do the same. I am honored to be here before this committee and I'm humbled to partner with you in this fight.
Thank you so much, Senator, for that wonderful opening statement, um, Ivana, do you have one as well?
Yes, Chair, Madam Chair, members of the committee, thank you for having me. As I said, I'm Ivana Stark, State Director of Clean Water Action Minnesota. Our mission is to ensure safe, swimmable, drinkable and fishable water for generations to come. While much divides global citizens today, we can all come together on the issue of PFAS. This global threat to human health and the environment impacts everyone, regardless of race, ethnicity, religion, socioeconomic status. Political leanings, gender or age, it is the great equalizer that puts us all in the same storm. In Minnesota, we passed the strongest ban on non-essential PFAS in consumer products in the United States and possibly even the world. We're addressing PFAS in firefighting foam and we are requiring the disclosure of PFAS in consumer products. By those who are selling products in Minnesota. A PFAS plume in the east metro of the Minneapolis St. Paul area was the catalyst for change. But as we know, the consequences of exposure aren't limited to a small landmass halfway around the world from where you sit. The PFAS problem is global and thus the solution must also be global. Clean Water Action Minnesota led the work to pass a Mars law. It was a hard fought battle and I'm happy to share with you what we learned in twenty twenty three. As well as the threats we're currently fighting now that implementation has begun. Our ban on intentionally added PFAS in eleven consumer items began on January one, twenty twenty five. Manufacturers must disclose their use of PFAS in items sold in Minnesota starting on January one, twenty six. And all non-essential uses of PFAS will be banned by January one of twenty thirty two. Essential means the item is necessary for the health, safety or functioning of society. As Senator Seiburger said, we are the birthplace of PFAS and Minnesota takes being a leader and ending it very seriously. Today, I'm happy to elaborate on how the chemical industry is seeking to redefine what a PFAS is. And what exemptions they are lobbying for or anything else that I can help with. We must work together to turn off the tap of PFAS entering our water so that cleanup can occur in a meaningful way. The cost of doing nothing is simply too high and when we consider the cost on human health and taxpayers, we have to do something. Remember, the chemical industry knew this chemical was toxic for over seventy years. They hired powerful lobbyists and controlled the narrative while concealing the truth. It's up to us to share accurate science and data to combat years of damage. There is strength in numbers and I'm grateful for a strong collaborative partnership. Together, we can tackle the serious health and environmental issue once and for all, and I thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you, Ms. Stark, that uh was wonderful as well, um. Uh, I think members of this uh committee, being a a state, um, uh, state of Australia, New South Wales. Um, uh, will be very interested um in the fact that uh you both, uh, you, Senator, represent. Uh, the state of Minnesota and have been able to uh get legislation passed. That does something that that frankly you would think would need to be done at the federal level. Um, firstly, in terms of banning products. So, um, you've talked us through uh a little bit in terms of the, the, uh, the. Um, elements of the bill in terms of banning particular products from the first of January this year. Um, what challenges, maybe just talk us through um the kind of development of that a little bit. Um, and who you worked with and why those products were chosen um to begin. So health products, cookware, a range of things, we can get the detail um potentially um on notice of, might even get the bill tabled. Um, but what were the, um, why did you kind of go with what has been banned firstly on the first of January? What led you to these products?
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the committee, um, from, from my perspective and the urgency surrounding. The ban on consumer products was how prevalent they are in our daily lives. Um, as I started to dig into this issue a little more, my interest began with firefighting foam. Um, but as I began to dig into this issue a little more, I discovered that PFAS was really everywhere. Uh, dental floss, menstrual products, uh, we've known about the cookware for quite some time, microwave popcorn, takeout food containers. Um, the more I dug, the more I found, and in having conversations with constituents and members of my own family. I learned that, that the vast majority of the population was just like me, we had no idea how vast. We had no idea how vast this chemical was found throughout everything we use in our everyday lives. And that really spoke to me that, that as consumers, number one, we should know what we're putting in our food or applying to our face or, you know, what's in the textiles around us. And to the extent that we've been surrounded by this for so long, this just made sense to initiate this ban on everyday consumer products that we use as a normal part of our everyday lives.
Yeah. Ms. Stark, do you have anything to add to that question?
Yeah, one of the reasons that the list kept growing was as the word got out that we were moving forward with this legislation, we kept having manufacturers reach out and ask for exemptions. So for example, dental floss was not originally on the list. And when they reached out for an exemption, we were really startled and shocked, frankly, that PFAS was so prevalent in dental floss. So we added that to the list. We added menstrual products to the list as well by the request of another legislator who was really passionate about reproductive health. So the way that we built that list of 11 products came from legacy bills that had already been attempted to go through the process. But then as Senator Seiburger said, we just kept learning more and more and more and it was really startling. And so that's how the list really grew.
Thank you. And so just from a, I'll get back to the legislation in a second, but just from a drinking water perspective. Minnesota, so the regulations in Minnesota, I assume the, well, shouldn't assume, but the water municipalities in Minnesota are filtered now in terms of the public municipalities are filtered sufficiently and drinking water now is at a standard for, for public drinking water firstly in, in the state? Or is there still work to be done there?
Madam Chair and members, there's still work to be done. I can speak to the area where I live. I, my home is on a well. I don't have municipal water. But my well, the aquifer that feeds my well in my home is contaminated. So I have filters in my basement to filter out the PFAS. One of the cities that I represent, the city of Hastings, which is to the south of my district, their, their municipal wells were in compliance until the thresholds were lowered last year. Now every single municipal well is out of compliance and the city residents are receiving water that has PFAS levels higher than acceptable levels. So we are, the, the city is building a treatment facility to remove the PFAS from the water. But it's, it's a startlingly expensive project. And here at the state level, we're trying our best to find funds or bonding options for the city to be able to afford an $80 million project that a city, a very small city the size of the Hastings, just can't, can't foot itself. So some places we do have safe, clean drinking water and some places we're still playing catch up.
Yes. And I assume one of the reasons for, for moving to products and pretty much every water utility or representative of water utilities that has appeared before this committee has urged us to look at the products in terms of PFAS because it's very, very difficult, obviously impossible for them to do much about it other than filter. But there's issues with sewage, of course, wastewater and what have you in terms of the levels of PFAS. So I assume the reason that you've turned to products is because that's the best and easiest way to get PFAS out of the kind of water cycle? Ms. Stark, maybe from Clean Water Action, would you like to, is that, that why you've gone?
Yeah. You have to think about contamination as a cycle. So things that you're bringing into your home, not only are you being exposed to, your babies are crawling on carpets and rugs, you're putting cosmetics on your face, but also when those items end up in the trash, that's another method of exposure. So we have 101 landfills in Minnesota, 98 of those are leaching into the groundwater. So we're looking at a bill between 14 and 20 billion with a B dollars over the next 20 years to clean up just our wastewater. So that's not accounting for the soil that has been contaminated by sludge or anything like that. So when we're talking about banning items, it's really this idea of turning off the taps so we're not putting more into our landfills to leach into our groundwater to come out of our taps and cleaning it up that way.
Yes, that's, that's actually extremely useful. Thank you. So the, I'm kind of interested in the, what it looks like, right? In terms of banning these products at a state level. So on the 1st of, on the 1st of January, let's say cosmetics, the 1st of January, were, was there certain cosmetics taken off the shelves, others put on? Has it led to different practices by companies in Minnesota? Talk us through kind of what's happening, what is changing as a result of, of this for, for consumers when they go to the shops?
Madam Chair and members, to be, to be frank, I have not seen empty shelves or lack of product availability based on the bans that went into effect on January 1st. Companies were well aware of what we were doing in 2023. They had almost two years to make any needed changes that they need, that, that were necessary to keep continuity with regard to products. And the way I look at it is the introduction of PFAS in these products has happened over time. Yet we've been able to exist as a society and a species, you know, for thousands of years. There are alternatives, there always have been alternatives. There are products that don't rely on PFAS, that technology is out there. And, and I was expecting a bigger pushback from product manufacturers and I, I really haven't heard a thing. So I, from my perspective, it's rolled out very, very smoothly.
Okay. Ms. Stark, thank you.
Yes, Madam Chair. I'm really noticing that companies are using this as a new marketing technique as well. I go shopping and everyone wants to advertise that their cookware is PFAS free. Everyone wants to advertise that their makeup is safe and clean. And so one of the things we talked a lot about during the legislative session this year and back in 2023 was this is going to drive us in a new direction of innovation. I know that there are countries around the world who are working on ending the importation of products with intentionally added PFAS. We really argued that if Minnesota wants to be a leader, then we have to remove this stuff now. If we, if we're going to have trading partners. So these companies really are catching up with the fact that consumers don't want to buy it and it's profitable not to sell it.
Yeah, great. Thank you. Mr. Barrett, questions from you?
Thank you, Chair. I just, the legislation you've spoken about and you're very specific to say non-essential PFAS, items with PFAS in it. Can we touch more on what the essential items are and how we're managing and how you're managing the risk of contamination from those essential items?
Ms., Senator, are you about to jump in?
Sure. Yeah, I can, I can start in first.
Okay. Yeah, great.
Take over. Some of the essential uses that we, we learned of during the course of drafting this legislation has to do with certain medical equipment, implantable devices, things that really because of the nature of the product and the use of the PFAS within it are convincingly necessary uses of this product. For example, in the orthotics industry with certain prosthetics and things like that. So we had to differentiate between those particular uses and, for example, a bag of microwave popcorn. And, and it was, it was fairly easy to, to kind of, you know, put in one column the uses that are non-essential and in another column, we really don't want to be putting health or lives at risk by interrupting that product's viability prematurely.
Ms. Stark, do you have a?
Yeah, and I would, yes, Madam Chair. I would add that the process to be considered essential goes through our agency, the Minnesota Pollution Control Agency. And so there is an application process that the manufacturer will work with through that process. And it is not an indefinite exemption, right, is the recommendation that, that Clean Water Action made. So I can also get more information from the agency since they weren't able to make it tonight if that would be helpful on exactly how they're making that, going through that rulemaking process to determine what they consider essential, if there are no alternatives, if that would be helpful.
Thank you. The second question is quite different, but is the goal to bring the contaminated drinking sources back into a safe level? And if so, how, how are you tracking with that?
The goal is always to mitigate the PFAS contamination within our environment. Within my district and within the state of Minnesota, different geographical areas are doing different things. In my area where I live, we've been tracking the PFAS plumes in our aquifers for almost 20 years and have, the remediation efforts really consist of the filtering systems at the, at the end use point. There is a 3M manufacturing plant in my district that is proactively pumping from an aquifer to filter the water and reintroducing the clean water into the aquifer to try to eradicate it from the groundwater. But from my perspective, we've always had to take that two-pronged approach of mitigating and remediating what's in the environment now and stopping the further introduction of additional PFAS from now on.
Are you optimistic then that, that one day these contaminated water sources will be drinkable again?
Well, yes and no. I think we're making progress, but we're playing catch up. There is a, there's an entire lake in my district that is so contaminated. You can't eat the fish, you really shouldn't swim in it. And, and it's a beautiful lake. So how, how do you clean a whole lake? I, I guess I don't know the answer to that. We can certainly stop the problem from getting worse and we can certainly address what we can. And I'm hopeful that in the future, as technology continues to advance, that we will be able to identify additional ways, better ways and more robust ways to ensure that our drinking water supply, at the very least, is as safe as it can be.
Thank you. When, when you look back through the process of the development and then the implementation of the bill, are there lessons now that you, you know, wish you, things you wish you knew as you put that through? I guess there would also be advantages for us to know now as we're a bit earlier in that stage?
Well, you know, once you enact a bill, sometimes issues arise or things you never thought of pop up. For example, I've been in conversations with dealers and manufacturers of power sports equipment. So think ATVs, dirt bikes, motorcycles, that kind of thing. And somehow the smaller versions of those have been deemed to be juvenile products. So intentionally added PFAS in juvenile products was banned effective January 1. And when we enacted that, we're thinking clothing, toys, blankets, pacifiers, bottles, that kind of thing. But turns out it also includes smaller ATVs, smaller dirt bikes. And so it, it's those kinds of, of strange technicalities, if you will, that kind of arise. So I've been, I'm, I'm, you know, we're, working on that problem to ensure that just the size of your motorcycle doesn't dictate whether it's banned in 2025 or 2032. But that's the same with any kind of legislation. Sometimes weird unintended consequences arise and, and we simply have to work through them when they do arise. But certainly happy to share some of those unintended consequences with you as you draft your legislation.
Ms. Stark, do you have any comments on that?
You know, I think that this, the way that Amara's Law was signed into law is a textbook example of how a bill becomes law in, in the US. We didn't really run into that many hiccups through the committee process. I would just say to be in close communication, so for example, we have a situation where we're working really, really closely with a, with Delta Airlines. They have been wonderful partners in this. We are the second largest maintenance base in the world for Delta Airlines. They started attempting to be in compliance right away, but because of the massive size and age of their particular hangar in Minnesota, no matter how fast they go, they just need a little extra time to be in complete compliance. We've been working very closely with them, sometimes multiple texts and emails a day. And so I think it's just little special things like that, that the opposition runs around and says, oh, the bill is not working in Minnesota, it's not implementable. That's not true. It's this very unique situation that no other state is going to have a problem with, but because we're the second largest maintenance base, they just needed a little extra time. They've been in full compliance in other states that have passed bans on PFAS and firefighting foam because their hangars there are a more appropriate size. So I think the big takeaway is just over communication, you know, working with everybody who's going to have to be in compliance, but then also being, having strong communication with other states and countries that have done similar things because it's really easy for the truth to be manipulated when we're talking about how certain bills are being implemented.
Okay. I do just have one more quick one for the Senator, if that's okay. Senator, from a, personally, you, you spoke about the filtration system you have on, on your home. I just wonder how many homes across Minnesota are fitted with those filtration systems and how affordable they are for individual water supplies?
I don't have any idea how many homes have the, the in-home filtration systems that I do. Like I said, I don't have municipal water, I'm at a well. And the unique situation of where I live is I'm a part of the, my community, the town where I live, Afton, is a beneficiary of the 3M settlement funds. So the, 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 the settlement pool of funds is paying for the filters in my basement. They are very expensive and they're huge, GAC filters, two very big filters in my basement. And through the settlement funds in the 3M settlement account, we get those filters replaced every year. When that ends, our families can be on the hook for that. It's, it's not cheap, it's not fun. And, and that's why, again, at the state level, we're looking at ways to fund these efforts both through municipalities and through private homes on, on wells to ensure that homeowners don't have to bear the cost of these filtration systems.
Senator, just to get, thank you, just to get it on the record, I'll go to you in a second, Mrs. McDonald. But just to get it on the record, because I don't believe it is on the record yet for this inquiry, how much was the 3M settlement?
The settlement fund was $850 million. And that is running out much sooner and much quicker than was projected when it was set up.
Yeah, that's very frightening. I'm not sure that information is actually helpful for us in terms of how much it is and that it's running out very quickly. I think our government would be very scared to hear that. Mrs. McDonald, you've got a couple of questions as well.
Thank you. And, and thank you, Senator and, and Ms. Stark. So I'll start with the Senator, if I may, and thank you for the work you've done in the PFAS remediation and environmental policy work. I was just wondering, in that context, what are some lessons? And it goes on to the question from my colleague, the Honorable Scott Barrett. What are some lessons you would convey to us or what advice would you offer to New South Wales lawmakers about building bipartisan support and public trust in that PFAS policy reform?
My advice is be persistent because you're on the right side of history here. And what I've always said is I place the health of my constituents over the profits of the companies that have known for decades that these chemicals are toxic. Ms. Stark can provide you with all the talking points to counter every ridiculous argument that they will throw to try to prevent this legislation from passing. But you can't, you can't discount the necessity to take every measure you can to protect the health of your residents and constituents. And that's what I'm doing and that's, I drew a hard line. I would not back down. I'm a reasonable legislator. I can make deals and compromises on just about everything. But on this particular law, I, I drew a hard line. And I think Ms. Stark saw that in action a few times when we were negotiating this. And my colleagues across the aisle understood it as well. So I mean, just stick to your guns, you're doing the right thing.
Ms. Stark, I'll go to you as well. Just, I think you probably have some stuff to say to this too.
Thank you, Madam Chair. You know, you have to be honest. We really had situations where our opposition would come in and tell part of the truth, half of the truth. We really had situations where our opposition would come in and tell part of the truth, half of the truth. And then we took it very seriously that we should continue that truth. So an example of that would be they came in and said California vetoed this bill, period. And then I testified and said, that is accurate, but the governor of California also said it was a good bill and he wanted to sign it. The only reason that he didn't was because they were in a budget deficit, which was not the situation we were in in Minnesota, we had a surplus. And so I would say be honest. You know, we worked really, really hard to work with members of the Republican Party, even though we had a Democratic trifecta, we had the governor of the House and the Senate. And we went in with our GOP lobbyists who said, Avon, I can have whatever she wants. She has a trifecta, she has the House, the Senate, the governor, but she wants to work with you. So we purposefully took the partisanship out of this on day one because nobody wants their kids exposed to this. Nobody wants to be exposed to this themselves, regardless of what party they're a part of. And at the end of the day, I think the story of this young woman, Amara Sterny, who spent these last few months of her life walking the halls of the legislature and telling her story. She grew up in the Plume Area, she was diagnosed with cancer when she was 15 years old. The doctors expressed to her family that had they caught it early, she might have had a better chance. So we are huge advocates of medical monitoring here. Amara could have been any of our kids, she could have been any of our sisters. And she spent those last days telling her story. And I think left, right, and center saw themselves in their families and Amara's. So, you know, my advice would be be honest, reach out, ask for help. You know, the science is there proving that we are on the right side of history, as Senator Seiburger said. And we take this partnership really very seriously.
Thank you, thank you. And as a follow-on, how did you ensure that vulnerable or low-income communities were included in those PFAS-related decision-making and remediation efforts? Because sometimes they're the voices that aren't heard. How did you ensure that those voices were part of that story?
Absolutely. Clean Water Action, at that time, had an environmental justice organizer who really helps connect us to those most at-needs communities to lift their voices up. The thing about PFAS is it does really hit everyone, regardless of your income and your background. And so we elevated all of those stories. We had a situation where in the East Metro, it was one particular high school that was hit so desperately hard. And so those were the voices we lifted up. But we absolutely keep front and center the need to fund these remediation projects in every part of our state, absolutely. We are having a crisis right now on some of the indigenous reservations. One elementary school in particular with extraordinarily high PFAS levels. And those are, we are working our hardest to communicate with that community and see how we can offer help and assistance.
Thank you. I have other questions, but I will go to the Chair because I know other people have questions. Thank you so much for your time today.
Okay, I can come back to Ellen because we may actually have time. But I will just ask whether this has led to, what Minnesota is doing. Are other states in the US following? Has it kind of led to, because again, it's kind of one state in, you know, 50. What are other states doing in this regard, in terms of banning PFAS products? They following suit?
Some states are, many are watching with interest to see how it unfolds. Here in the state of Minnesota, what difficulties we encounter. I think Ms. Stark can speak to specific efforts of other states. But I want to highlight that I have received correspondence from people from across the United States applauding the work that we've done to mitigate PFAS and ban PFAS here in the state of Minnesota. And I have, that had the honour of talking to folks from around the world, including your wonderful committee, to share what we have done. So it is getting national and international attention. And I'm so proud to be able to partner and help and do anything that I can as a legislator to help other states craft similar legislation.
Thank you, Ms. Stark.
Madam Chair, one of the documents that I shared has a chart on it that shows all of the different states and what portions of the bill that they are passing. So, you know, states are kind of picking and choosing out of Amara's law what they think is the most feasible to pass in their particular state. One thing I have to highlight is the need of defending the definition of PFAS as one fluorinated carbon atom. That's really what we're spending a lot of time on right now because opponents to Amara's law are really trying to open that up to a broader definition, to create more loopholes. So in that document, you'll see, you know, firefighting foam, 15 states have taken action, carpets and rugs, 10 states have taken action, ski wax, six states have taken action, and so on. So there really is, eyeballs are on Minnesota and they know we have to stay strong. It's, you think about dominoes, right? We were that first domino to start knocking over. I've had conversations with legislators in Oregon, Vermont, Montana, across the country, where we don't even have Clean Water Action offices because they are so interested in trying to do what we have done. And so, you know, I tend to connect those legislators with Senator Seiburger so that they can, you know, really work on from that angle what that looks like. But it is happening, and it's really exciting.
Yeah, thank you. We just heard from witnesses that have published research earlier in the year, in January, I think it was this year, yep, that shows a connection between PFAS in drinking water across New South, across the United States and associated with many cancers. It's quite an interesting bit of research. Importantly, their research looked at quite a few different PFAS chemicals because you've just talked about different PFAS chemicals. So how important is it? Because we're currently, Australia's drinking water guidelines has PFOS, PFOA, PFH-SX, and then we're just introducing PFBS. So that's all. And with Gen X chemicals, we've been told that it's, there's not enough evidence for Gen X chemicals. Do you have any comment as to whether we should be expanding those chemicals in terms of what we're, in terms of drinking water guidelines firstly? Because that's, they're the four on the radar of the federal body that is responsible for setting drinking water guidelines. Do either of you have a comment about that?
In terms of Amara's law, we classify PFAS as a class of chemicals rather than calling out individual chemicals for the ban. In terms of drinking water, we follow the EPA. Currently, the EPA recommended guidance, so the PFOA, PFOS at four parts per trillion, and then PFHXS, PFNA, and Gen X are at 10 parts per trillion. And then there's a mixture of two or more PFAS, you know, that is also addressed. So, you know, the more that we learn about these individual chemicals, much like the previous testifier said, they will change one little atom here, one little atom there, and then you have this regrettable substitution. So it's, you know, a constant chase of the science. I'm not quite sure if that's helpful or not because there are, you know, up to 15,000 different PFAS that we're trying to keep eyeballs on. But I think the ones that you've identified are, you know, we know what those toxic ramifications of exposure are.
So there's different, there's two different things here, isn't it? There's the testing in our drinking water, which the witnesses, the last witnesses said there was, the US EPA had the ability to test for 70, I think, at this point in time. But when we're looking at banning, and we've just lost Avon's video, hopefully she can still hear and hasn't jumped off entirely. We're looking at whether to ban PFAS in products. And again, this is the, possibly the Australian government, but who knows what the state government can do in this country around banning products. But if we do, it's better to look at all PFAS as opposed to hand-pick particular PFAS chemicals. That would be impossible potentially because at the moment, I think, looking at PFOS and PFOA, it's simply banning the import of it as a chemical or banning the manufacturer in this country as opposed to all products containing it, other than firefighting foam, which we'll keep separately. Is that, Senator, I'll go to you, just in case we've lost Ms. Stark?
From my perspective, that was the easiest and the best way to go about it when it came to the legislation banning PFAS-containing products. I think it's easier to capture what I was trying to capture by not getting into the weeds of which particular substance is what, for the exact reasons that Ms. Stark said. We can be seeing different versions develop through time. But the intent of my bill is the same, to keep those products out of consumer goods. I think when it comes to drinking water standards, I leave that to the pollution agencies and they have chosen to identify particular PFAS elements when they come up with the acceptable levels.
Yes, thank you. Now, Mrs. McDonald, I'll just go to you again. You said you might have one or two more questions, I just wanted to check. Mr. Martin, do you have?
Yeah, I do.
Yeah, we'll go to Mr. Martin first.
Thanks, Chair, and thank you both for making time today. It was mentioned earlier about powersports or ATVs, motorbikes that contain PFAS. That was a bit of an unintended consequence in the negative, so to speak. I know from conversations I've had with some stakeholders outside of this committee process who had some ideas that had been somewhat proved to more or less differing degrees as to how to filter the product out. So for example, one group that was backed by a couple of local universities were looking into using hemp to take some of the water out of some farming areas up north of Sydney, up north of here. Are there any experiences like that you've had where people have come with solutions that are somewhat surprising or left a field?
And Senator, you're on your own at the moment because we've just lost Ms. Stark, who may be trying to rejoin, if you're feeling okay to answer that one?
Absolutely.
Great.
You know, we've always said if the companies that fought this legislation could put half as much effort into innovation, we'd be almost home-free here. I have heard of many different initiatives to both mitigate the PFAS that's already in our drinking water through different forms of filtration, different methods of breaking down actual PFAS. I've heard of many different innovative products. I happen to have one right here that's made out of sugar beet residue. So I love the idea of using hemp as a filtration system. This particular company uses sugar beet residue to line paperboard containers and create a non-plastic biodegradable liner to keep PFAS and other chemicals out of our environment. The innovation is definitely there. But we need to recognize the innovation, we need to funnel more funding and recognition to innovative forces. And again, if the PFAS companies could join us in that fight, I think we'd be ahead of the game.
Thank you.
Thank you, I will just note, I think Ms. Stark, you may have joined by phone now, is that correct?
Yeah, can you hear me?
Yes, yes, we can, we're almost out of-
I'm so sorry, we're having a, we're having a storm, I apologize.
That's absolutely, that's absolutely fine. Our weather in Sydney is not too crash hot either, I must say in the state, we've got floods. Mrs. McDonald, do you have, I'll throw to you if you've got one last question?
I just have one more question, and it was basically to help us with when we're, what are the most important elements of a public communication strategy? If you could share some insights on that.
Ms. Stark, we might go to you to begin with?
Yeah, you know, people are really busy and they have a lot going on. And PFAS is a really complicated issue to understand. But we laid a foundation of community education through town hall meetings, social media, reaching out to impacted communities. And then we built a coalition of people who had been impacted by exposure. And that's really what drove the bus with having Amara tell her story. We had Derek Lowen, who survived a brain tumor. Ben Rule survived leukemia. Telling these stories that people, that legislators and lawmakers could really identify with was key. And helping the average person understand how they're bringing these chemicals into their homes, how they're exposed and how their children were exposed was so, so very important. And then we used our field and our phone cannabis team to go out and have individual one-on-one conversations with our members. And we brought that back to legislators. So we would, you know, go to Senator Seiburger and say, we've talked to 40 people in your district and this is what they're saying. And that's really impactful to support people who are driving the innovation around passing a bill like this. But it's also really important for people who have concerns and aren't so convinced that this is a good idea. They need to know how important it is and how their constituents are being impacted. So there is on-the-boots lobbying and there's communicating with the industry, our Chamber of Commerce. And then there's really helping average Americans or Australians understand what is this chemical, this cluster of letters, and how does it impact me?
Thank you. Thank you both so much, actually. We do have to finish it now because we're a couple of minutes over time. And I do think we could continue talking about this for some time more. But I really wanted to thank you both so much for your advocacy and the fantastic work you've both done on getting action on PFAS in your respective, in your jurisdiction, Senator and Ms. Stark, in terms of your advocacy. And thanks so much for making yourself available, really appreciate it. The committee will get in touch with you if you've agreed to take anything on notice or if any members have any further questions of you. Again, really appreciate it and, yeah, let's hope we get some great outcomes from this inquiry as a result of your evidence today. Thank you so much. And that is the end of today's hearing.